It would be a different horse and we'd be paying for it differently. And I don't think that's something we can work out today. The preconditions to moving the gun range make it very questionable whether it will ever be done. One of the preconditions that was mentioned recently was the idea of reciprocal covenants between the camp and the neighbors, and yet we haven't negotiated what would be in those covenants. We didn't get that far. So we can't say that we agree with that either, or that even that needs to be a requirement or a condition or any part of this. We just didn't get to that point. So please, don't look at this as something that, as Mr. Castleberry put it, will make my clients happy, all except for one thing. What, where we end, where, the point we got to in the negotiations, here's the list of things we're willing to put up with in exchange for the gun range being moved and us knowing it's really going to happen and when. And if it doesn't happen, then the existing gun range gets shut down, which is the greatest incentive in the world for getting a new one built and getting the money to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Commissioner Pelosiere.
I have a question for one of the scout representatives. How many acres will this gun range encompass when cleared approximately?
We have the chairman of our operational shooting sports. Do we understand?
About three to four acres.
Three to four acres.
And what type of structure, if any, is going to be built? Anything like a shed or a concrete building or a...
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Typically, Commissioner, it entails a, for the shooting, the rifle shooting, there's a shed to keep the rain off the kids so they can shoot the targets in the rain. The shotgun is a skeet range. So there are stations, just as in any typical skeet range, that the shooters move from station to station to shoot the clay pigeons. Typically, they're just...
Two houses?
Yes, sir. A low and a high and a little concrete platforms for the shooters.
Eight stations.
Yes.
In addition, an indoor classroom so that we can use technology for the kids to practice the report and the mounting of a shotgun electronically that doesn't make any noise. So there would be an indoor classroom space, too.
Is that it? Commissioner Pelosiere?
For now, yeah.
Commissioner Lively?
Mr. Sears, Mr. Sterling, please stay there for a moment, please. Guys, it, you know, I was led to believe that we were down to one issue here, and it, according to Mr. Woodward, that doesn't seem to be the deal here. The covenant, I think, needs to be discussed. I really do. What might be in that? I think that, to be fair, they should have a concern in that area. Do you feel that if you guys went back to the drawing board or the discussion board, even without a magistrate, you could come up with a timeline to apply for these permits? Because then you would have a timeline, six months. You say it right here, between both parties. I mean, is that possible? And what if we could recess this hearing and send you back for 30 days? I, I mean, I know a little bit about government permitting. I got to believe you guys could come up with something, I mean, that would guide you. You could lend to them more, you could reveal your hand of what a timeline would be and make the neighbors more comfortable. I think, I don't think you're there yet. I think you're very close, though. And I, I don't feel comfortable with this board going either way with this thing when we're this close. I think we're very close, and I can't stress that enough. Would you be willing to do it?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. So what we would have to do, I do not have the authority to speak for the volunteer board on that decision. We would have to take the decision of this group, of the county commission today, and whatever that decision may be, go to our board and have discussions. I would just remind you once again, the relocation of the gun range was never part of our initial application before Putnam County. We're doing that because we want to be good scouts. We want to be good neighbors. So it's a two-way street. We need help from the neighborhood.
I agree.
We don't have the funding in place. We don't have the permits, and we don't have the covenants. This is a real opportunity, a real opportunity for folks to step up. It would be unreasonable for me or Mr. Sterling to speak on behalf of our Board of Directors to commit to something without further study. For example, how much funding is available from Putnam County Government for this project? Is there an opportunity from government to step up and help solve this issue? Is there an opportunity from the neighborhood to step up? And, and I have to tell you, Commissioner, I've heard fundraising from bake sales and things like that to raise money for this. This is a major gift fundraising program. So, you know, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here to do something to solve an issue. So to answer your question is, depending on the outcome of your decision today, we, of course, would reserve the right to go back to our board and discuss what we could do next.
Okay. All right. We're on the same page. I think that the county would have something to offer. I don't know that for sure. I can't speak for my commissioners. But some of that money you're talking about is in a way of concessions for permitting and this sort of thing. Some of it's over our pay grade, so to speak. You've got to go to the state level to get it. And yes, I think that that's where you need to go with the conversation. I can't help to say that. It's, it's, it's so true. I don't, I think you've got a few open-ended worries of the neighbors that could be sewed up in a very quick manner. I really believe that.
Yeah, if I could just offer, you kind of opened the door there for the development guy that came out with me. If there is funding at the county level to help solve this issue, we're open to talking about that. In fact, that would be amenable. I know you have a budget. I know that you represent the citizens of the county, and perhaps there's funds that can be used to help solve this, just like funds from the neighbors, just like the funds from our volunteer board and donors who are going to have to go out and raise it. So, you know, that's, that's the, that's the issue we have, and I know Mr. Sterling wanted to talk.
Okay.
Just very briefly, Chip, I, I think that, you know, one of the big challenges we also face is, is satisfying the definition of the neighbor. It's easy to deal with a group that Mr. Woodward represents directly because we, you know, Sid can talk to Michael anytime. But as Michael said, there are many people in the neighborhood and other residents have said that Michael does not represent. And yet, some of the, some of the issues that were raised even in this meeting are new to us today. Concerns that were raised are new to us today. The traffic issue, for instance, is, we didn't realize, was such a concern to some. So it's, it's difficult, you know, when you don't have, there's no gated community. The neighbors are spread out all along our boundary. It's a huge boundary to the camp. And at what point do you cut off what, who to satisfy in this process?
I think you did a good job with that, with the lead contamination, the water concerns. We could apply that to the same thing, to the roads and some of the other concerns I heard today. So I didn't want to disturb you. Keep going. No, hang on, Mr. Sears. I don't, I'm not sure on this. I just...
We were not going to leave until dismissed.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner?
Uh, no.
Counsel, did you have something?
Yeah, well, I have a question for counsel.
I hate to keep repeating, I hate to keep repeating myself, but, I mean, the board needs to make a decision today, and if the board is willing to accept, accept, accept the recommendation of the special magistrate as is, then we ought to vote on that and be done with it. And if we're not, then that means the board wants a deadline put in there, and we ought to talk about how we're going to induce these people to come up with, either set her own, which I don't, I'm not feeling real comfortable in. We're in a position to set her on. But if you leave here, if, if the people leave here today with a clear indication by the board that they're, they're going to leave here one of two ways. They're going to leave here with an accepted recommendation, end of day for now, or they're going to leave here knowing this board's not probably going to approve anything unless there's a deadline. And that's going to induce them to do something. If you just say, "Go out and talk some more," the scouts aren't going to be real inclined to talk too much.
I see that.
They don't have any leverage.
Okay.
Or they don't have any inducement to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for a moment.
Is Commissioner...
Go ahead. Go. Russ, the question I have is on page 676 of the handout that Mr. Woodward passed out, number 21, within 45 days after the receipt, the recommendation. But then it goes on to A, B, and C. If we did choose to send this back for negotiations, don't we have to have a time certain on that, too? That we would have to say...
We're, we're so past all the statutory deadlines that nobody's worried about that. But, but, but my point is, if you're going to send it back, you need to send it back with some clear instructions. If you just tell them right now, "We want to continue this meeting till the second meeting in January," we're going to come back then and we're going to be in the same boat we're in.
Well, my concern, while I still have the floor, if you don't mind, would be that the declaratory determinations and reciprocal covenants with adjacent neighbors, I kind of have to agree that that's a broad statement. And trying to define who the adjacent neighbors are and if you could meet the covenant with everybody around, that's a huge...
Another que, how many are there?
I don't know.
How many are there?
Who you could call their neighbors, though? I guess that's the question, is, is it the immediate neighbors that live on Baden Powell? Is it the ones that live back in the woods?
Thank you.
Is it the ones shooting beside the guy's house that aren't appropriate to this person's thing? I mean, it's, it's a bunch of different things, and I think, I think we're just setting this up for failure on those.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counsel?
Very briefly, I just wanted to make two points. Thank you for the courtesy of allowing me to come back, Mr. Chair. To Russ's point, there is not a deadline in this statute we haven't trampled on, and there is not a limitation on third-party standing that we haven't waived. But I do think that it's getting close to where we have to have a definitive answer because we've already gone through one season, and now we'll be heading into a second season. I will point out that what, what we thought of in the reciprocal covenants, I agree with Michael, that 70-51, like any mediated process, you have to be careful what you disclose. But I can tell you what I understood that we were discussing. There are dozens, there are scores of lots, most of which are improved, many of which have full-time residents. We were working with Michael on general covenants that basically say, "If you are agreeing to this, then you understand for yourself and for your buyers henceforth that you acknowledge you are next to this range, that we don't want to keep revisiting this over and over again." Having said that, as with every operation when you deal with the real world, and since everyone, since I've heard a couple of quotes, one of my favorite quotes is from General Sherman, "All tactics in when the first shot is fired, it seems appropriate here." There are going to be some number of people that we haven't reached. There are going to be some number of people whom we will never reach. We simply have to exert, and this is part of the uncertainty, no matter whether you send us back for the covenants or not, whether you give us a timeframe to get covenants, there are just going to be a number of people we're not ever going to get to, and the best that we can hope for is reasonable, good faith cooperation on that of all things. And it is ironic that, on that, where we're the greatest beneficiaries of that very significant protection, we're willing to accept the risks and we're willing to accept the limitations because anything that we get within reason is further evidence that a large number of our neighbors are willing to work with us.
Thank you so much. The gentleman in the back has to be called by one of the commissioners to speak, otherwise the public hearing is closed. Let's be mindful of one reality, and it's called grandfather. They are grandfathered in with what they are doing now. So if that is the case, nothing happens to the range, nothing happens to what they're doing now, and the immediate and adjacent community is pretty much stuck indefinitely. I think someone said immoral. Well, anyway, there is no end to what's happening now, is basically, it's infinitely as it relates to, to that. So I think we need to weigh those issues. There has been, from what I can see, adequate time for all of these issues to be resolved. This board, in a quasi-judicial perspective, needs to make a decision. And the decision, according to our counsel, is to accept this recommendation of the special magistrate as is, to modify it or to reject it. What is your pleasure?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Pelosiere.
Commissioner Flag called on one of the representatives from the neighborhood to throw a number out there, just a wild number of how long, and I think he said two and a half years. I'd like to hear a response from the scouts. What would you say is a wild number? An extremely... We can no doubt do it by this time.
While they're deliberating, we're going to go on a three-minute break, please. Three off and three on?
Yes, sir.
Once more into the breach. What we are looking at after we had our confab is, again, because we're relying upon third-party issues, what we are willing to commit to is to apply for permits with full engineering within 12 months. What that will do is give us a year in which to do further determination of viability, costs, design, and such like that. It also gives us a year in which to get the declaratory actions from the, from DEP and from the county. And as I said, Russ and Brian had already indicated that as far as they're concerned, the county could give us determination that as long as we're staying on the same property, we're not modifying the use to the point where we lose our, really what we're talking about is losing our grandfathered statutory rights. The thing that you have to factor is our ballpark from our, our professionals, design and construction over there, is that cost alone is going to be over $50,000. Once we will have done that, we will be a little bit into the deep end of the pool. And if, and what we would propose is, because we do have a development agreement being proposed, that we would be willing to give reports to show good faith progress, starting from inception, whether it be, as Ray came over and suggested, that it be annual so it's not to be a burden, but we don't care if it's annual, every six months, every quarter. And because it's a contract, then Russ can put into the agreement, because the agreement is essentially with the county, a remedy to have, essentially to have a show cause in the event that there is not evidence that we are proceeding in good faith. Because, again, the problem with the absolute outside is, because we have third-party issues, we don't know what the absolute outside is. I'll also say, though, that I think as we go forward and we get the engineering, if you want to have provision that we will amend timeframes as we know further, as we get the declaratory statements, as we know further where we are with fundraising, and where we are with implementation of the engineering and permits, we're happy to do that as well. I mean, essentially, we are absolutely willing to commit to show good faith progress, and we are willing to commit to a hard, fast timeframe to have permit application and engineering analyses in place.
Thank you very kindly. Mr. Woodward, any commentary? You've heard what we've heard.
Well, first, like Mr. Sears, I have a client group consisting of people not limited to those who are present today.
Yes, sir.
By the terms of my agreement to represent them jointly, I could not even begin to commit them to anything without having a discussion with all of them. The commitment to apply for permits that was suggested, a deadline to apply for permits, is not the same thing as a commitment actually to relocate the gun range. What happens if that doesn't work out? I understand that there's a proposal to have some sort of enforceability by the county that if they don't apply for the permits, they can be made to somehow. But then what? They apply for the permits, one of two things happens. They get the permits, they don't get the permits. I don't know why they would not get the permits. I can't think of a reason, unless for some reason they didn't really want to get them that badly. I don't know. If they get the permits, then there's no timeframe for really acting on them, other than what may be the limitations of the permits and their potential renewability. And if the permits run out and nothing is done, for whatever reason, then nothing is done. So we're back at the same, we're, we're back at the place, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that I don't appreciate, I do appreciate any movement toward making a hard and fast commitment to do anything is a step in the right direction. But I don't know that that necessarily gets us to the point where we can say, "That's as good as the horse we were bargaining for when we agreed that in exchange for a definite commitment, a definite enforceable timeline, deadline commitment to move the gun range, we would agree to accept the expansion of the camp that would result in impacts not only from increased numbers of people coming into the camp and using the gun range more, but also other external impacts such as traffic and, and noise from human activities." It's, it becomes a different horse. So I think, again, I applaud any movement in the right direction, but it's, it's not something I'm in a position to stand here today and say, "We'll make my clients happy" or even something they could live with.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. I want this commission, at this point in time, unless you have questions, I want us to move forward. It sounds like we are leaning towards some modifications. I don't know about the language that was just presented there, but I want to hear whether or not, are we looking at modification to, to the agreement or accepting it as is? That's what our council have asked us several times, and that's where I am, and that's what I want to see us do at this point. Let's, let's make some things happen.
I would like to begin the discussion.
Okay.
I, I lean towards approving it with modifications. One discussion I had with a member in the audience, Mr. Allen, he said that one way that we could possibly do if we're going to have a negotiation with covenants is to use the lists that would have been compiled during the previous hearings, the people who have spoken, people who have come to the hearings, and that at least would be a wide range of people, the people Mr. Woodward represents and people that did not join that group but who have come forward to speak. So we would have names and addresses and something to work with as a base. I do feel like we need a commitment for moving the range, and I think that we should have a date. I think we could be lenient. I think that we could put a date with a possible, you know, extension of a time. We need to work with both parties as much as we can. I need to say that I definitely support the Boy Scouts. I think it's a wonderful institution, and I think, I just want that to be known. I think we probably all feel that way. Who would not want to support the Boy Scouts and what they do for our community? But this is something that we need to work out. We need to have some agreement. We need the community to be happy, and we need them to work together, and we just need to massage it enough so that we can get the main thing straightened out and some possibilities. That's my opinion.
Thank you very kindly. District two?
I think that, considering the grandfather clause that's in there, the neighbors, what I've heard today and what I've heard from the scouting side, you're going to work together. You have to work together, and you have worked together, which is really commendable. I would lean to accept, at this point, the special magistrate's recommendations with modifications, based on what I just heard from the BSA lawyer. I like those modifications, I do.
Do we have those modifications documented? Because I will want those reread in just a few moments.
Full engineering within 12 months and a timeframe.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the magistrate to present his actual, with those modifications. So I want the exact language that this commission will be considering in just a moment. District four.
Mr. Chairman, I so confer with the rest of my colleagues. I, I tend to like to move this thing forward, and I support this with the modifications that Mr. Spofford's already mentioned, so...
District five.
Wait, 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 wait. I don't think Mr. Spofford's mentioned any of them.
Not, not mentioned, but...
There was one he mentioned, and then the attorney from the Boy Scouts of America mentioned. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. We're going to make sure it's clear. Yes, sir.
I, I think you misunderstood the question. I wanted a number of some sort of time, of something. And what I'm, I guess I'll put it in later, how long did it, you say raised 2 million? Is that correct? 2.2 or something like that? How long did that take?
You don't want to know that.
Just ballpark.
It's pledged. Six years, and it's not all paid, and it stalled because we can't get a permit to move forward with those donor-designated pledges for the projects and our permit.
That makes that clear.
Anything else, Commissioner Pelosiere?
I'm studying.
Mr. Spofford, if you'll come back to us and the, again, the highlights of your recommendation there is to approve execution of an agreement between the county and the Boy Scouts, setting forth the terms and conditions under which the proposed expansion may proceed. The only issue of additional deliberation and discussion is the issue of timing, and there was information that was just provided to us that I think Commissioner Lively is referring to, that we want the actual language that would consist of a modification and any other commissioners who have other modifications to be considered. That's what I want before us right now, please.
Okay. If you look at page 144 of your packet, about halfway down the page, item number one is the condition we're really discussing. And it states that the Shooting Sports Complex will be relocated to the central part of the camp, as shown on the revised site plan, upon obtaining all required funding, permits, declaratory determinations, and reciprocal covenants with adjacent neighbors. Based on the offer that I heard from the Boy Scouts, I would add, after that sentence, the Boy Scouts will apply for, will complete engineering and apply for applicable permits within six months of execution of this agreement.
Oh, they said 12.
Or 12 months, excuse me. And then the next sentence would be, the relocation will begin within six months of obtaining the required conditions. Then the next sentence would be, the existing shotgun trap range will remain. You could probably, actually, after the sentence, relocation will begin within six months of obtaining the required conditions, add another sentence that would state, "An annual progress report regarding satisfaction of this condition will be provided to the Board of County Commissioners on an annual basis."
Is that understood by the five of us? Is that...
I guess one clarification I'd like is that the Boy Scouts will apply for the applicable permits. I think we need to define what permits, like EPA, I think that was...
I think we need to define what permits, like EPA, I think that was one of them, and county, Putnam County.
DEP is the declaratory determination. Permits will be primarily county permits, be site work, building permits as necessary.
Right, that's what I mean, as necessary. They won't build everything all at once, so they wouldn't get the permits.
Right.
For the aquatic center and the extra rooming places.
Right.
Okay, so I just wanted to define what permits are we talking about within 12 months? So are we talking about DEP and?
DEP and county permits.
It is strictly related to the Shooting Sports Complex, not the overall expansion.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's one reason we wanted to do this annual progress report, because then we would, you'd be able to get presented as to what permits were applicable and how they didn't achieving those or obtaining those. And just to, to add, my amendment from the previous presentation was on item condition two on this page below, I would strike and relocated after current. It'd be item two on page 144. It states that the current and relocated Shooting Sports Complex is subject to the following operational limitations.
What you want to strike?
And relocated. So these would apply to the current Shooting Sports Complex.
All right. Mr. Spofford, can you just, one more time, try to read through that first paragraph before we ask for a commissioner's recommendation to proceed with the motion?
Sure. The Shooting Sports Complex will be relocated to the central part of the camp, as shown on the revised site plan, upon obtaining all required funding, permits, declaratory determinations, and reciprocal covenants with adjacent neighbors. The North Florida Council Boy Scouts of America will apply for all applicable permits and complete engineering within 12 months of execution of this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need.
He's not through.
I'm sorry?
He's not completed.
The relocation will begin within six months of obtaining the required conditions, and then a new sentence will be inserted that says, states that the Boy Scouts will provide annual progress reports to show progress towards satisfaction of this condition.
To the VOCC?
Yes, to the Board of County Commissioners. And that would begin on the date of this execution.
What about the rest of that?
Of this agreement.
The existing shotgun.
And then, the existing shotgun trap range will remain in its present location as a secondary training site for occasional daytime use, not more than one day each quarter, and not during summer camp, to augment the relocated Shooting Sports facilities.
That is that condition in its entirety. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Harris.
Okay. Where we said reciprocal covenants with adjacent neighbors, we have determined that it's not just the people that join it along the road there, it's more people than that, right?
Yes, there is, just looking at the parcel data from the property appraisers database, I would estimate there's 20 adjacent neighbors, there's probably 15 or so, 16 neighbors to the north, and that's where a few of those have been represented by Mr. Woodward reside. But there's some also to the south, west, and east.
Do we have a list of people that have appeared at the public hearings? Should we include them if they bothered to come in and speak?
We could look at the list.
Not for covenants.
Well, we could look at the list and determine which one of the, which, who's adjacent.
Yes.
To the site, because the minutes from the zoning board of adjustment we could use, and we can use the list that I've gathered of some of the emails that we had from our hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Spofford. Any additional questions or discussion on modifications?
I guess the only other question.
Please, sir.
Okay. We're going to have them give a report to the BOCC. It's really the people in that community that wanted to keep tabs on the progress. How do we let them know?
Through that list we were just speaking of, correct?
Would we do that, or they would do that? So we just need to clarify that.
If they're making the report to us, I think that our planning department could help facilitate that, just to make sure that it's properly known. Please come forward, sir.
Thank you. A suggestion in regard to the covenants provision.
Yes, sir.
For today's purposes, it might be well to take it out because it's so ill-defined in its parameters. Neither you nor I can force a property owner to grant a covenant. We don't really know what the covenants would say, how many property owners would, would be willing to do that, be interested in any of this.
So you want to take reciprocal covenants with adjacent neighbors out?
It, it would likely prevent potential argument, misunderstanding, disagreements later.
Okay, thank you so much. I think.
Mr. Chairman.
Barker.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Mr. Woodward his response to the suggestion to modify paragraph two regarding the conditions that would not be applicable to the relocated complex?
I, I really wasn't able to follow that without seeing that in writing. Could you run that past me again? What, what is the modification?
Right now, it says that the current and relocated Shooting Sports Complex has a laundry list of conditions.
Of when you can shoot.
Yes, I understand.
Mr. Spofford has recently suggested that those conditions not apply to the relocated Shooting Sports Complex, only to the existing one.
It was always our understanding that the, the restrictions, other than generally applicable restrictions to the entire camp facility, but that the gun range restrictions would apply to the existing gun range up until the time that it was shut down when the new one, you know, to move the new one. But I, I don't, I don't think the intention was ever for those restrictions to apply once it was moved to an area of the camp where the noise would be better contained by the topography.
I think then Ray was correct. Thank you so much.
Yes. What we discuss sidebar is, the point of the declaration was to continue to try to have the neighbors and the camp work together. As long as it remains mentioned in the report that we will attempt in good faith to create reciprocal covenants in a reasonable fashion, and I'll just tell you for the record, whether enforceable by the county or not, we do intend to use the service list of everyone who appeared here before the ZBOA at the first public meeting under the 7051 and the meetings that we had at the camp, the two meetings. So we're, we're fine with, with releasing that as an obligation, but we will absolutely continue because we think it's important for the neighbors, to the extent possible, to continue to try to better understand one another and to work together.
Thank you very kindly. Yes, sir. Please come, you talking about what we're talking about?
Yeah, thank you. I was.
Is your statements related to the, Mr. Spofford's comment?
Yes, yes. Well, just in regards to Mr. Castleberry, Mr. Castleberry and Mr. Woodward, he was saying whether or not the covenant should apply to the new range. I'm not sure that we know until we actually know the decibel lever, level, or how disturbing it is. My original impression with it was, was that the, the shot would go out over the prairie, but now if it's firing back towards the neighboring homeowners, essentially, we don't know what that sound level's going to be. And, you know, shots are very directional, so that's one thing. And then the other thing I'd like to just make sort of a broader thing about everything that's being discussed, I'm not sure that all of, that the communities, that the entire, or that the majority of the communities, majority of their concerns is addressed by talking about only the gun range. We have traffic issues, we have numbers issues.
I want you to limit your comments right now, sir, to what we have modified there, and if you have done that.
Okay, okay. And if I could say one last thing specifically to this, as long as, I suppose, the community could have some input into whether or not this is agreeable, the Boy Scouts have a lot to say about how they feel about the, the changes and the requirements that are being made, as long as the community can, has the opportunity to give a little input and agree to what's being imposed on us, we'd be grateful.
Appreciate your commentary. The Boy Scouts have demonstrated in this meeting and all of the previous meetings, from my records, good faith efforts, due diligence, and very much politeness and patience here. I want to hear a motion from this board as to what your position is for proper procedure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have one thing, counsel.
Could you come up, Ray, please? I, I think procedurally that Ray would, I think it would make more sense for Ray to offer a modified recommendation that this board could accept or reject.
Okay, I thought that's what I just did, counsel.
Yeah, I thought we just did that.
He just read the whole paragraph to us, which was his.
And that's for the record, your modified recommendation?
Yes.
Can you give me that precise language?
I can give you that precise language.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
All right, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this special use permit as recommended and presented and amended.
Hold on just one second, counsel.
The motion should be to accept or reject the recommendation, the amended recommendation of the special magistrate.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the special magistrate as presented and amended.
Second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Libley. Further discussion. They had time to consider, ready to vote. Question has been called, district one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like a motion, as part of the agenda item, the, the recommended action was to approve the execution of an agreement between the county and the Boy Scouts. I'd like to have a motion that approves the execution of an agreement between the Boy Scouts and the county, allowing this development based on the conditions set forth in the amended recommendation of the special magistrate.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
About a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Libley. Further discussion. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes, I'm sorry.
District five?
Yes.
District three. Motion carries. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.